Good evening, I'd like to call a regular Board of Education meeting to order. Please rise to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great body for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Go call Kelly.
Present. Here. Stachin.
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Excuse me, I'm going to read easy.
Mr. Singh.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Mr. South.
Here.
Mr. Skadston.
Present.
Mr. White.
Present. Fire exits, Dan Marie.
The fire exits are in the rear of the LGI.
Alrighty. It's always nice to have at the end of the year, we're gonna have a couple celebrations today, we're gonna start out with Mr. Steve Gold, he's gonna be recognizing some students for essays. Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Assemblyman Scottados is up in Albany right now, the session will be ending to, on Wednesday, and they're crunching through all the last pieces of legislation, so when I left the office, the session was at ease, which means that they're gonna be coming back again tonight, so he sends his apology for not being here, but he wants to thank the Board and the school district for their assistance in both the summer reading challenge and for the Black History Month essay contest. He also wants to extend his congratulations to the Board for being rock solid and doing an excellent job, we actually have the perspective of several other Boards in that the district includes three cities and three towns, and we always feel as if the City of Beacon School Board is one of the strongest that we have in our district, and I wanna, he wants to congratulate you for all the good work that you're doing, and, and you are, because we've seen how things can go when Boards are not doing their job well, so congratulations to you all. Before I hand out the summer, the essay contest, I want to just give you, good folks, a summer assignment, and Craig, if you pass that around. This is our summer reading challenge, which we put out every year, we distributed 16,000 of these to the schools in our district. Inside your pamphlet, you'll see a nice bookmark to help you mark your pages, and you must all pledge that you'll read at least 15 minutes each day for at least 40 days during the months of July and August, and mark the calendar here for those days, and when you do that, and you complete the back here and send it in, you and everyone else, all the other students that have received this both in classroom and in libraries, will get this certificate from the Assemblyman, and we just want to encourage, actually in all seriousness, all the students to spend some time, if you're having a staycation and you're not going away, you can see the world through books, and so we really do encourage you to do that, and we know it'll be helpful for the rest of, of your life, and I'm speaking to those students that are out there in the audience. Now, every year we hold a some, a, a Black History Month essay contest, and I'm happy to report that the two students that won the award this year actually followed the instructions, and they spoke to a member of their family or friends who lived through the civil rights movement, and got a story and accounting of the importance that Dr. Martin Luther King had in the world at that time. And those two students that won the award this year is Sarah Chin, or I should say, R. Sarah Chin, and Dylan Kelly. So I have awards and prizes of Barnes &amp; Noble book certificates for $20 for each of them that I'd like to give out now. So I'm actually very proud of you. Congratulations to both of you, I read your essays, they were very moving, and it looked like you really took this seriously, so the Assemblymen would like to thank you very much for that. We have this, these certificates for you. Sarah, here's yours, and here's yours, Dylan, and these $20 gift certificates for Barnes &amp; Noble, Sarah, this one has your name on it, and Dylan, this one has your name on it.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Congratulations.
Mr. Gold, would you mind taking a picture with the two students?
Oh, that'd be great.
I'll get it from Mr. Kelly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Gold, we always live in the moment, but it's always good to reflect on, reflect on the past and when we're looking at the future, so thank you.
That was good.
Alright, our next presentation is some student athletes we're gonna be introducing. Mr. Nemechek.
Good evening, it's an honor to stand in front of you again, and, at the end of the school year, and present a student athlete that has moved her, her activity above and beyond many of the other student athletes in the state of New York. And at this time, to come down and talk to you more about her, her expertise, is Mr. Ron Hammond, one of the coaches, Ron? And Jumi Akamami, come on down, kid.
Just wanted to say that it's an honor to be here again, this is my third time being able to come to the Board at this time of the year and present in regards to several athletes that have accomplished amazing things. This young lady right here, about five weeks ago, for the first time, learned how to do triple jump, and did it so well that she was able to eventually qualify to go to states for it. So how well did she do, she came in 10th overall for the triple jump, with a jump of 36 feet, nine and a half inches. She also is, okay. She also is a high jumper, and she's been spending a lot of her time this year as basically a co-coach, a coach for the event, teaching many new athletes how to do the, the event. She is currently, she holds a number two spot, right, for the record in Beacon High School for ladies outdoor high jump, with a jump of five feet, five inches, right? Okay, so, and she went to states for it, she came in fifth overall, third in Division One with a jump of five feet, four inches. Now, not only is she an amazing athlete, she's also an amazing, amazing student, currently she's on track to be valedictorian next year. So this is a young lady who had a lot to do. Coach Henry couldn't be here tonight, he has an event for his daughter who is receiving an award tonight, so he couldn't be here, he wishes he could be here, but on behalf of his wife and himself, here's a little plaque commemorating your accomplishments and what you've done, and just want you to know, we are so proud of you. Alright.
Thank you very much, and keep up the good work. Alright, Amber, we have the recognition of tenure recipients and retired staff.
Okay, as I meet the person over at the stand, Ms. Bias, I picked you first, so can you come down? So I have the pleasure and the honor to award our first tenure recipient, this woman is a woman of great tenacity, grace, she is an amazing member of our school community at JV Forestal, she goes above and beyond, she's committed to differentiate in instruction, she understands the meaning of what social emotional intelligence is, she balances the head and the heart. Without further ado, without reservation, I would like to call up Ms. Laura Johnson.
Good evening, I'd like to recognize Daniel Burkowski, she's a special ed teacher in our building, she has taught third and fourth grade inclusion as well as intensive literacy. Danielle graduated from SUNY Cortlandt and SUNY New Paltz, she is among the most expert in teaching literacy, and will be and continue to be a wonderful asset for all the students here at Beacon. Her students describe her as being a teacher that makes learning, reading fun, Ms. Burkowski has been a key member of our PBIS and literacy committees, and she has taught after-school IRP. So I'd like to recognize Ms. Burkowski for tenure. Jaclyn Ziegelman has been a fifth grade general education teacher for three years in our inclusion classrooms. Next year she will be teaching at the fourth grade level in the inclusion room, and will loop with those students to the fifth grade. Jackie graduated from Mount St. Mary's and is duly certified in gen ed and special ed. She has been an integral member of our PBIS team, and has voluntarily organized the talent show at Sargent, which has become a Sargent-style tradition. I think we had about 30 acts in the talent show, it was wonderful. Jackie has taught after-school IRP, the math club, and her students describe her as the best teacher, and we love her, and Jackie, come on down for a quick introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Mr. Saltish.
Good evening, everyone, I'm up here with Mrs. Candela, we would like to start by recognizing Mrs. Duan Asuma, so if you want to come on down, Duan. Duan is our school psychologist at Ramout, prior to Ramout, she worked for the family of Woodstock, and from her time in that position, and based, based on that, and from the LGDTQ of Kingston, her office at Ramout has been designated as safe space for our students, so we thank you greatly for that. She's been an amazing member of the Ramout family, goes above and beyond for everything you need, always there for the students, there for the staff, truly an asset for me to rely on in the building, so I thank her for that. Those, one thing I'd like to highlight for Duan, that she's ran at Ramout, is, was it this past fall, this past fall, if I misquote this, you can get me, she ran a roller derby event in our Ramout Middle School gymnasium to raise money for Donna Peterson, and it was an outstanding and amazing event, I believe the organization that she's part of are the Misfits out of...
Atcourt.
Atcourt. If you were at that event, the amount of time and energy that went into that is unbelievable, and it raised a whole lot of money for a good cause, and that talks about who she is, so without reservation, we certainly would like to recommend her for tenure. Next up for tenure from Ramout Middle School, we have Marie Conklin, come on down. Marie is our home and careers teacher at Ramout, and prior to Marie getting to Ramout, our home and careers program had lost some of the things that define home and careers, such as cooking. So, believe it or not, when she took that position, we said, "We haven't cooked here in years," and so, so she has, through her hard work and dedication, brought those things back to the students at Ramout Middle School, so I'm proud to say that, while we don't have all the stoves up and running yet, we've got stoves that are running, she's cooking, we've got some new stoves, new microwaves, a dishwasher, so the district has put a lot into the program, we're looking to continue making those improvements, and her efforts with the kids, you've seen an increased desire for those students to be part of that program. One observation I got to have from this Conklin, she was, I get to watch, as an observer, she did cupcake wars, and I don't know how she was standing at the end of the day, because I had trouble keeping up with just the note-taking, but she went to, I think it was 10 different stores, I don't know if she'll do that again, to get all the supplies that they wanted, but to see the students take pride in making cupcakes, designing cupcakes, and then she had teachers come to every class period as judges, we had four staff members come and judge all the cupcakes on different qualities, it was really an amazing thing for our students to get to experience, so without further ado, I would definitely recommend her for tenure. Next up for tenure at Ramout Middle School, we have Kate Frick. Kate is currently a sixth grade teacher at Ramout Middle School, and at Ramout, in our sixth grade, even though it's an elementary certification, we specialize by subject area. So, one of the things that's extremely hard to do when you specialize in sixth grade is find people that can teach science. So, when we were doing interviews, the position that was open was science, and we put science background, and lo and behold, we actually found somebody that had a science background with an elementary certification, which is almost impossible, but what that's done for our sixth grade science program is it has somebody teaching our students science that understands science, understands the deeper content, and it allows them a much deeper experience in her classroom because they're getting in-depth knowledge. I was, one of my observations in Ms. Frick's room, they were going over earthquakes, and she had the kids designing buildings that they first had to do a blueprint on, and then they had to use toothpicks and marshmallows and try to put these things together, they only ate a few of them in the process, but again, it's another hands-on experience for the students at the middle school, and, and both the people I've introduced so far here, that's what they've been bringing to us, they've been bringing hands-on activities to our students, I've been thrilled about what I've seen from them, and they're, you know, it's without further ado that I also recommend Ms. Frick for tenure at Ramout. I didn't write anything down for my, for my next tenure recipient, my next tenure recipient is Mr. Giometta, so if you'd like to come forward. So Mr. Giometta here, I had a similar experience last year when I was able to offer tenure to one of my other assistant principals. Mr. Giometta has been my right-hand man for the past three years, a major part in, in the image at Ramout Middle School is the work that he puts into our students and our staff, I can't say enough about his dedication, his work ethic, he's on time every day, he's late, he's making schedules, he's all, all night. The one thing he does not do is stand still, alright? But he's developed connections with the students, the staff, and the families in this district at an amazing rate. Now, I'm counting on him for hopefully another three or four years as my assistant before he moves on, unless of course, he gets offered anything else in the meantime, I'm not certain about that, but there's, those possibilities are out there. So, without further ado that I congratulate my current assistant principal.
So I'm so glad you read the agenda, Mr. Saltish. And also, how does a board member become a judge for the cupcake wars?
We welcome all judges for cupcake wars, a very good experience. Okay, I am now going to segue with my portion of the program to our retirees. First up, I don't know if she was able to make it this evening, but I would like to begin with Ms. Judy Bagliato. For anybody that doesn't know Ms. Judy Bagliato, which I would find it very hard in this room for people to not know her, she was hired in 1984 by Mr. DeCesare. So, Mr. DeCesare, our former superintendent, was here when Beacon High School, this Beacon High School was built, and that was one of his visions, and I think his other long-lasting impact was the hire of Mr. Bagliato, because she has served in many, many capacities, and I'm just gonna go through a few of them real quick. She started as a sub in the kitchen in the old high school in Sargent. She then became a community liaison for Sargent and JBF, she went to BHS to be the trucey person, so anyone that went to school in those days, she drove around in the white car with Beacon, Beacon City School District written on it, and she was fine everybody. Then when the new BHS building opened, she was moved into a security position, and in 2005, Judy was sent down to Ramout Middle Schools to be the security guard down there. And even though she's not here tonight, I will tell you this about Judy, she had other opportunities in life where she could have probably left the district and pursued something in the nursing field, she'll give you some other reasons why she didn't do that, but I know that the reason that she was still here to this day is that, once she got into the school district of kids, there was nothing else that interested her, she left everything with the students, she found a home at Ramout, did anything asked her, cares about kids, and I know she's sad to retire, if she could, she'd keep working every single day, I'm sure everybody's still here at some football games collecting at the gate, but Judy really exemplified what it is to be a dedicated employee to this district, so I congratulate her on that. Another retiree from Ramout Middle School, come on down here, Mrs. Lasfotta, come on. So Mrs. Lasfotta has been in the district for 31 years, she was hired in 1985 at Ramout Middle School to teach industrial arts. Back then, there was woodshop, squall engines, and electronics going on, not the electronics we're doing currently. She spent one year not at Ramout, the only year not at Ramout was, I believe, the '05-'06 school year, if I'm not mistaken. In 2006, 2007, she headed the synergistics program, which really revamped the technology program at Ramout Middle School, where the students were doing more of a STEM experience with computer simulated modules, I've observed her doing hot air balloon launches, rocket launches, the, the little go-karts that they would test. So, in her time at Ramout Middle School, Allison has always been known as the life of our building, I don't know how we'll replace her, because you knew exactly what was going on while Allison was there, she rallied the troops for any cause, there was support and anybody that needed support, kids loved her, staff loved her, she organized everything for us, and she's what makes Ramout a family, and so I'm not sure how we're gonna replace that, other than to make her keep coming anytime we're in need of somebody to bring people together, but it's just an amazing characteristic about her is her ability to unite people together, and we are really, really gonna miss that, so thank you so much.
Well, good evening, everyone, on behalf of Dr. Severin, who can't be here tonight, but along with me, my colleague, Ms. Sims, we are very pleased to present to you a gentleman who, you know, when you have an interview, you, you sometimes see that, that sheet of paper has so many nice things that they write about themselves on that, but this gentleman went beyond just having a great look at resume, his interview was equally as great, he impressed us from the minute that he, he came into our office, and, Mr., if you want to come on up now, I'll, I'll say some more, but Sergio Perez, if you'd like. The impressive part, I mean, of course, you know, he has resumes, he's a graduate of Tufts and NYU, and, and he's been involved in the cities of Boston and New York City, so he brought with him a type of diversity that we knew that he could connect with our students here, and, and the things that he's been able to accomplish, he's the type of guy he can, he can fit in, in so many different ways, and we had the pleasure of Mark Lyon and Claudia Farley, both of them are just experienced, you know, having a guy like him just come in and be able to do whatever it takes to make this art department be the best, and he clearly has done that for us, so, so we're very happy that you've joined us, and congratulations on your tenure.
I just want to mention a few other people at the high school that couldn't join us this evening, that retired, Mary Jo Albano and Arlene Vipersgrad retired in the first semester, so we have certificates for them that we will mail. Also Diane Perpetua and Linda Rodriguez, teaching assistants at the high school, both were not well enough to come this evening, and we'll make sure that they get their certificates as well. Mrs. Saltish?
Good evening, Ms. Lavelle, if you could come join myself and Ms. Candela. This year we are celebrating the retirement of Ms. Lori Lavelle, she is leaving after dedicating 25 years to supporting the children in the Beacon City School District as a special education teacher. Ms. Lavelle was hired by Ms. Ophelia Richards in 1992, where she began teaching in a self-contained classroom. She has been flexible in her teaching roles, before coming to Glenham, she taught at JV Forestal and in summer programming. Lori has been a supportive, kind, and caring teacher throughout her career, her love for the children and the endless hours she spends planning and preparing academic materials has shown to be truly effective for the students' development, both socially and academically. Although she is... Although she is retiring, Mrs. LaVella will hold a place in her heart for all of the students at Glenham. Her nurturing ways and out-of-the-box thinking will be truly missed. In her retirement, Lori is looking forward to traveling cross-country with her husband, reading, spending time with family and friends, and most of all, she is excited about visiting her grandchildren in Arizona and Florida. In my first year at Glenham, I appreciate all that Lori has done to support the kindergarten students, and I am thankful for the relationships that she's maintained with the older students with whom she's worked. We'll miss you, Lori, congratulations. And Ms. Kinnell, I'll give us two words.
Dedication, commitment, student center, and student focus. So I had the honor of working with Lori for the past 25 years here. And the words that I use are some words that exemplify Lori. She started her career and finished her career putting these words into daily practice. Lifelong learner. Lori continues to examine best practices and strategies to support all of her kids. I didn't say students, I said kids, because that's what she calls all of the students that are near her. Those are my kids. These are the characteristics I truly admire. She continues to advocate for her kids even till the very last day of school. Something that I think we should all take into consideration as we move into and continue in our career as educational professionals is the importance of still doing what we need to do for the best interest of our students. I will truly miss Lori from working with her. We've been together for many years in different capacities, but I know she won't be too far away, so congratulations.
In Ms. Cahill's absence, she had her seventh eighth graduation tonight. I would like to call down Ms. Carol Forzano, Miss Lori. Ms. Cahill wrote a short little summary of her meeting. She said, "This year, we say goodbye to Carol Forzano, who's retiring after 21 years of service in the Beacon City School District. She has been a dear friend and colleague, but most of all, a kind and compassionate school nurse. Carol began her career as a teacher at Our Lady of Lord's High School. She then joined the Peace Corps and served in Central America for two years. Carol was inspired by a nurse at the World Health Organization and returned to college at Cornell University, New York Hospital's School of Nursing. Upon graduation, she worked at Sloan-Kettering Hospital and the Cabridi Center as an oncology nurse. She was also a visiting nurse in Manhattan. Carol then had children and decided to go back to work in the schools. She says school nursing fit like a glove. She was able to mix teaching with nursing, combining her interest in public health with school nursing. Those of us who have worked with her know her as a highly dedicated and caring nurse. She never hesitated to reach out to any student who needed her help and often met with students during lunch or in breaks to connect with them. She will be missed at South Avenue. We all wish her a healthy, happy, relaxing, and well-deserved retirement." Also, for Ms. Cahill, I'd like Linda Baron to come down, first grade teacher at Pathas. This year, we are bidding goodbye to Linda Baron. She is retiring after dedicating 25 years to teaching children in the Beacon City School District. Before coming to South Avenue, she spent six years teaching in a Catholic school and then worked as an assistant director of a nursery school. After she made children and returned to work, she started serving in the district and then became the half-day kindergarten teacher at JV Forestale in South Avenue. She was the dual-language teacher for many years, serving under Principal Ophelia Richards. Linda continued to teach first grade after the dual-language program dissolved. Linda had been a supportive, kind, and caring teacher throughout her career. Has been, sorry. She has enjoyed teaching because she loves children. Linda has been successful in building a strong foundation for her students and developing their enthusiasm for learning. Although she is retiring, she will always treasure the great memories of working with her colleagues and teaching her wonderful students throughout the years. She is looking forward to traveling, gardening, and reading wonderful books in her retirement. Most importantly, she is excited about babysitting her two grandchildren. We at South Avenue appreciate all Linda has done and will greatly miss her. We wish Linda a relaxing and well-deserved retirement. Congratulations.
I have two recognitions. First is Henry Sabelli. Henry Sabelli has been the director of facilities in Beacon for the past five years. Henry came to Beacon from Arlington Central School District, where he was first the assistant director and then the director of facilities for 13 years. During his time in Beacon, he worked closely with the architects on capital projects and closely monitored our energy performance contract. He has been the president of the Mid-Hudson Chapter of the New York State School Facilities Association, where he was very well-respected by all other facility directors. As the president, he organized Empowering Day and actually hosted it here in our school district several years ago. Henry loved going to Albany with his organization to lobby for issues affecting facilities in all school districts. In his retirement, Henry will be spending time with his family, especially his grandson Benjamin. We would all like to thank Henry for his service to the Beacon City School District. And last but not least, Mr. Giudana. Tom Giudana, who's been a custodian worker in Beacon for the last 20 years. Many staff members know Mr. Giudana because I believe he has worked in every school in our district. But his favorite school to work in has to be the high school, where he is most connected to the students and staff members. He is very dedicated to all students, but has a special place in his heart for the music and drama students. He encourages all of our drama students during rehearsals and makes it his business to attend each production on his day off. The high school is going to miss Mr. Giudana. We would all like to thank Tom for his service to the Beacon City School District.
As those of you who don't know me, I'm the food service director here at the school district. And it's not often that we have a person in school food that retires, but this year we do. And that's Lisa Shawong, I think she's here. Lisa, come on down. Lisa has worked in our school district food service department for 18 years. She's worked in all of the schools, including the old high school, with the acceptance of this school. For the last 14 years, she worked at South Avenue School along with Carla Lakey. Lisa has had perfect attendance for as many years as I can recall. She's the most dedicated associate who's willing to fill in last minute for any position. Her kind approach to the children of South Avenue sets a tone for the wonderful atmosphere for that kitchen. Lisa connects with Beacon School children as well in her second job at the Howland Library as a library clerk. She just can't give that up and will continue to work the library after her retirement in the district. Lisa will continue to substitute in our kitchens, because we won't let her go. And we are so grateful for her time spent making the meal experience a positive one for the children in our schools.
Now, don't all leave, we do have cake in the cafeteria.
Yes.
Alright, so the board members, please be back by 8:05 for executive sessions. But we could adjourn to go to executive session now, and then we'll go have cake with some of the tenured people and retirees, and then come back for executive session, okay? So I need a motion to adjourn to executive session. We could do it now and then.
That would be a right.
Alright, so I need a motion for a recess. Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Lisa.
Aye.
So, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals to discuss matters made exempt by federal or state law with regard to student matters or to seek legal advice from the school attorney.
Second.
Aye.
Comments and questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Seven, oh. So we do have some corrections to the agenda. The first correction is 11.03 non-instructional F1, it was a change of start date. And 11.04 instructional Q3 was removed. We also have an addendum to the agenda, which will be 12.01, which will be Resolution Number 061917A, which is to extend the interim appointment for the assistant principal appointment for Lori Price from July 1st, 2017 to July 18th, 2017. Alright. Do you have any student or school presentations? Seeing none? Any student or school presentations? I just did that. Grant Hock said. Any parent groups? Open to the public. I see Dennis signed up, but he's no longer here. He told us he was leaving. Anthony signed up as well, but we're not gonna let him speak. Go ahead, Deb.
Good evening. Deborah Davidovitz, parent. I wasn't planning on speaking, so it's impromptu. I just wanted to give a big thank you to Mr. Soltish for coming up with an innovative, very innovative opportunity for our eighth grade students to take art next year. Letter went home to all of the seventh grade parents about that. And it was in response to the community's questions and wants, and I really appreciate that that program was put together. So, thank you to Mr. Soltish and everyone who worked with him.
Thank you, Deborah. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we're gonna go to the interim superintendent report.
Just a couple of reminders. We have a lot of moving up days. We had a couple today between pre-game and kindergarten. But our fifth grade moving up ceremonies are tomorrow and Wednesday. And middle school is Thursday evening, and graduation is Saturday morning at 9 o'clock. So a lot to do in a short period of time, but all good things. I also want to mention, although Dennis is not here, one of the questions he usually asks, and this is the board meeting, we usually have the hearing for district safety, but the dates have changed, so they have given us some time over the summer to do that. So I'm actually gonna be Kenya to her question, because as soon as Matt is on board, we are gonna schedule a district safety meeting with staff and with, obviously, with you and the board and the fire and the police, so we will do that. We'll give you some heads-up time in case it's during the day, so make sure that you can come. And last, since this is my last board meeting as interim superintendent, I just kind of wrote something that I'd like to say. I actually want to say a few words to our staff. And I realize that change is never easy, and these past 17 months has been a time of change and fortitude. All of our staff have made a conscious effort to put their concerns aside and concentrate on what is best for kids. And as the school year comes to a close and a new change is on the horizon, I want to commend all of you for your commitment and dedication. As we welcome Dr. Landau into our Beacon community, I know that the entire district will continue to work together to move the district forward and do what's best for all of the children in Beacon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Alright, we're gonna have committee reports. Kristen?
We are meeting over the summer, the last meeting we talked about planning the calendar for the upcoming year and assigning some, I know the last thing was a policy. We don't have a date yet set for when we're gonna be.
Did you have any board comments? I said just committee, I meant committee board comments.
That's right, yeah. Well, I've been attending events throughout the district, and it's been really, as you said, the happy time of year. It's been really lovely today. Liz King had helped to put together a slideshow for the moving up day at Glenham, and it was really sweet and really nice to see, you know, the tech services department kind of working with the staff in that way to do something really special, and it was really lovely. And I just would like to, I know we have it as a board goal to have the district and the community working together in concert. I'd like to just say publicly that it would be really great to be working with the city government and moving goals forward for the district. And I just want to say thank you to Anne Marie for all your hard work. And I know that it's been a long road, and things have held together, and now we're starting a new chapter. But thank you so much, and, you know, very appreciative.
Greg?
I'll second that one. Thank you very much for all your hard work and your extra work and extra hours and extra aggravation. So you can return to the regular functions, which you do quite well, and happy to have transition going on. We came out of it all in one piece. You mentioned the moving up ceremony in Ram Bell. I'll be attending that one, and also with the high school graduation. I really enjoyed the Calico Ball, which is our third grader's great showtime, the Vandiver caravan, and a special guest appearance by Tom Chapin. So it was quite, and a choral presentation also. So there was a bit of everything. This is one of the crown jewels of the Beacon School District, this Calico Ball. And if you haven't seen third graders dance dances from around the world, it's well worth your time to try to take some time off and catch it next year. And I certainly hope we do this forever. On graduation, I'd just like to say that during my career as a reporter, that I would occasionally be dispatched to cover graduations here and there, whether it was Dover or Lord's and one-time Beacon. And I must say, I loved doing those assignments, although they could be, from a reporter's point of view, very difficult to cover, running around catching this and that. But it's just a great spiritual feeling to see kids reach that stage and move on. And they are just primed for the day, so I look forward to this.
Great. Anthony?
Alec Deco does the same sentiment. I appreciate Anne Marie, her team, all the administration staff, all the way up from this side of the table all the way down to the other side of the table. We've gone through a lot of evolutions through this in one-year span, so appreciate all the work that you've done. For the diversity committee, we met on the 12th of June. If you recall, the goals were to increase instructional staff diversity and to identify slash remove barriers to marginalized students. We've gone through a couple of iterations as to on the to-do list, and it's been ever-increasing whichever meeting. Also, the meetings have been difficult because they're one-hour meetings every two months. So for the coming year, I'd like to pull the committee members to meet monthly, as well as schedule a three-hour retreat on what we're working on. Some of the more immediate products that are in the works are the report card, which we do need numbers for. And that project, based on the experience that Matt's had with Lithica, is gonna take a little while to finish. Some of the more shorter-term goals are to make recommendations for teacher staff development along the lines of undoing racism and discrimination, and also bolstering the Black History Month curriculum. The, more of the shorter-term goals, more of the immediate goals that could be completed are community presentation on school prison pipeline and no rights. I also believe we could include, listen in that community presentation for, to be sponsored by the district here, as well as the NYCU's pro-bond service of reviewing our code of conduct. And that product is, would, they'd make a recommendation, there'd be no, there'd be no obligation for us to take the recommendation, but I believe it would be in our best interest to have that reviewed sooner rather than later. At the last meeting, just wanna recap, we had two guest speakers, Cherry Womack from the, and Jim Crow Action Network, acronym XINJIN, and Shannon Wong from the New York Civil Liberties Union. And they went over some statistics, the district, and as well as talked about distorted justice, peer court, student mediators, undoing racism, and building allies. So, that's it for now for the diversity committee, and there's more to come. I mean, I did also, just as a side note, because I know we're transitioning to superintendent, I took the liberty of talking to Matt too, as I know Anne Marie was there at the community itself, but I also wanted to not lose steam in the transition. So I thought that was the best way to, to do so, and I've got a quick read from him and more information to come on that.
Thank you. Don?
Yes, I attended the Nashawn Society fundraiser. I mean, it's a great organization that, they encourage, encourage the, and celebrate the academic performance of our, of our students, as well as the, their ability to interface with the community and do good work for the community. So I think it's a, you know, a great club to help, so therefore, and the fundraiser. I went to the Glen Elementary Concert. I always love going to the elementary concerts. It's great. In the, in the fall, you listen to them, and you know, and it's, they sound good, but you know, everyone's only wince when you hear a squeak or anything, and then it's amazing by the time the spring comes around, how much they progress. You tend to forget as you get older, and your kids get older, how, how fast little, little kids can, can advance. It's always, it's always great to hear the spring concert, so that was very enjoyable. And finally, I attended the senior award night where all the seniors in high school get their scholarships and everything. Once again, it's a great night to celebrate all the academics that the kids have in, at the, at the school. I wanna, you know, congratulate them all, as well as wish them good luck with their, with their futures, and whether it's college or going out into the workforce or, or going to a trade school or something. One thing, if I know it gets emphasized by the guidance councils, and I just wanna emphasize it again, there are tons of scholarships that people can apply for, and unfortunately, sometimes people don't, and I don't know if everybody realizes that there, there, you know, people say, "I can't afford college right now," or whatever. It's, you try, you both get the scholarships and everything, and there are available, and guidance councils are more than happy to assist, assist the students with that as well. And finally, I also wanna add my thanks to the rest of the board, to Anne Marie. I mean, being superintendent, I do not think was her ultimate career goal, and, but she stepped up. She stepped up in the past. She's been a valuable employee to the district for quite a long time, and I don't think anybody else could have done it as well and smoothly, filling the, the transition between our former superintendent and our current superintendent, so I wanna add my thanks as well for all the work that you've done.
Thank you.
Mary?
Anne Marie, I also really wanted to thank you for your efforts. When you said seventeen months, that was a bit of a shock to hear how long it was. I'm sure you're even more shocked than.
Yes.
So, thank you very much for your efforts. I attended with Celia the curriculum committee meeting, and we have basically finished the process for this year. And some of the curriculum writing that's gonna happen this summer is phys ed, workaround is probably the wrong, the absolute wrong thing to say right now, but a way to become compliant with the state.
School-wide movement, right?
Yes. Sorry, thank you. So that's exciting, that we're, that we're solving that problem, at least temporarily, because it sounds like the state's about to change rules again, but, and also curriculum writing for K-5 maker space, so that there'll bring some more consistency across the elementary schools. Several electives in social studies in ELA at the high school, and K-5 math at ELA. So that's, that's really exciting, and I think we learned a lot this year, and hopefully we can apply what we learned to next year. So, thanks, Celia, for your work there. I also attended a Calico Ball recap meeting, and I echo what Craig says. It's such an amazing program, and we talked a lot about how to further integrate the, the idea of the, of the Calico Ball throughout the third grade curriculum, so hopefully we'll continue that conversation, and I think there's some really good ideas before, about that. Before, about that. And the last thing is just congratulations to everyone, all the students that are moving up. I unfortunately will not be able to attend the graduation, but best wishes to everyone, and congratulations on your results.
Jordan? I know you have a lot of comments.
No, 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 I'm, I promise, I'm gonna be very nice to you. So, the policy committee meeting did meet, I'm just gonna be nice. On June 12th, we did, we do, you, you will see on the agenda, there is a wave of first reading for charging a school meals policy. That is to make sure that Miss Pagano can get the policy, once it's adopted, to get it publicized, and for letters to get out to parents. It's really, deals with the charging of school meals. One of the biggest things that we did change in the policy in regards to limiting the number of charges to five per elementary student and three per secondary student, as well as outline what would be available as an alternative meal. At this time, we are not moving forward with a free and reduced price meal services. It's, it's really a notice, it's not a required policy, so we're not moving forward with that at this time. And again, we are tabling the student wellness policy, because my understanding is there's a little bit more work to be done with that before it comes forward to the policy committee. I also attended the middle school honors tea, and I also attended the Career and Technical Institute recognition ceremony at Duchess County Voces, and thank you, Cecilia was also present at that. It wasn't really a ceremony. It was definitely a recognition ceremony, but out of our students, I know like when we talk about the budgets, we talk about, you know, students attending Voces for career and technical. I just wanna let you know that we had sixteen students who completed the Voces program in a variety of areas: construction trades, cosmetology, culinary arts and restaurant management, early childhood and teaching assistant, graphic design, nursing assistant, and security and law enforcement. And Sidney DiGregorio, who's a valedictorian for the recognition, her speech, I think, really gave a very good representation of what it means to be a student who also attends the Career and Technical Center. She was able to really pinpoint, like, the experience that they feel there in attending. So, that's it. I am looking forward to graduation, as Mr. White knows. I also want to thank you, Anne Marie, for putting up with me. And I guess the biggest thing, Mr. G, I'm gonna just put you on the spot for a minute. You know, I know you're on the agenda and other administrators, so here, just don't lose sight of the human connection with your students, if I can just say that, that you look forward. Thank you.
Karen?
So, I just wanna mimic what others have said. Anne Marie, thank you very much. Thank you for not being afraid to make change. What I've learned, being a board member, is that usually people who sit in the interim seat don't wanna do too much to kinda change things or disrupt the, the momentum, but, but you did that, you did it with grace, and you were able to stand behind the decisions that you made, so I, I appreciate you. This, this road has not been easy, and so, you know, we all feared, you know, you being a little challenged and, and put through the test, but you were able to stand up to that, so I, I appreciate you. Thank you for your hard work. I attended, as well, I attended the awards night. It's always a pleasure to give the students credit for the hard work that they've done, to see how proud they are to walk the stage and accept their, their awards, all the essays that they had to write and the hard work that they put into that, so it's always an honor for me. I feel like each one of those kids approaching, approaching the stage are my kids. I'm so proud to see them, you know, succeed and, and do well and go on further in their education or just developing their careers. I also attended the Calico Ball, which, you know, I had to say, I learned sign language, so I was really excited about that, but I went home and showed it to my daughter, who actually does sign language, and she was like, "Okay, Mom, you're limited to like the family." So I was like, "Okay, I need more class," but it was very engaging. I love the mama. That was something that I've never seen before, so the students did phenomenal. Kudos to the, the special education students that were there and people that worked with them. I found that to be amazing, and I just wanted to give credit where credit is due. I also attended JVS Tally Show last Friday, and I have to say, it was awesome. When Ms. Byer speaks about the whole student, which is something that I'm constantly saying, like you gotta think about the whole student, there was a student who actually feared performing, but wanted to perform, so we kept the curtain, they kept the curtains closed, and, and she performed, and that song was phenomenal. And at the end, standing with Ms. Byer, she, she was holding her hand and very shy, but, you know, it takes a lot to encourage your students to step beyond what they feel comfortable with, and, and she was able to coach her through that, and all the family members in attendance were just, you know, like applauding and screaming, because it was like, you didn't know who was behind that curtain, you know, playing, so kudos to them and all the students and the teachers who did like fashion shows and stuff like that, some throwbacks, so that was exciting to attend as well. I believe, Celia already gave me an update on Navion, so I just had a question. I know that some things were taken out of Navion, so I guess you would be able to?
Nothing was taken out?
Okay.
I just, I just negotiated a better deal with the consultant.
Okay, okay, 'cause I was like, "Well, what's missing?" Because now I gotta research that. But, so thank you on that. I guess, growing room, we're still?
It's in, it's in, in process, and planning and development for September. And Ms. Sims is the administrative lead here at the high school that's working with the clinical fellow at Maris College for that.
Alright, and then at the diversity committee meeting, there was some discussion about the Black History Celebration that actually used to happen in the district, and I was already in communication with Donna Haynes, who is the wife of Jeff Haynes, who is a Grammy Award winner and a drummer. He, he worked alongside Pete Seeger, and I'm sure that all of you in this room know him probably before I even got to Beacon. A phenomenal man. He speaks through that drum when he's on there, and so what I've done is I've reached out to her. She pretty much, I, I passed around the background information on Jeff, but I also have some of the other places that he's played, played at, Gardner Town in their Black History celebrations, but he also was here in 2010, and I believe in 2015, he was here, working with our fifth graders, and he was working with the seventh graders. The curriculum is all attached. I, I would like the board to consider reviewing this information and bringing, bringing back the Black History component. It, we may not have to do it to this extreme. The numbers that are presented here are current numbers, so I did confirm the cost associated with him actually coming to the schools and, and doing the work. They said that it took, you know, there were some dedicated teachers that pretty much worked alongside them to make it happen, so I believe that it is similar to the operations of the Calico Ball, but I think the Calico Ball is ten weeks, right? Is it ten weeks?
Yeah.
Right, and so, this, this is like, there's a week, and then there's another program, another week that goes with the, with the middle school, but the cost, I don't know if I would have to let the district review it. I don't know how that would work, but...
So can I just make a recommendation with this?
Yeah.
I would say forward it on to the curriculum committee and have them review it, and then they could.
Tie to social studies.
Tie it into the curriculum committee. So I think Meredith was on it this year, but I think if we give it to Cecilia?
We'll take care of it.
She, she's on the curriculum committee, so that would be reviewed by the committee,
and then they could bring it forward.
And in terms of cost, would that, that all would be decided before the school year starts, or?
I think the co-serve. It would definitely be good for the co-serve.
Okay. And then I was thinking, I don't know, I know that Beacon Arts and Ed is a foundation by itself. I was like, if, if, if in fact the district can't sustain this, then maybe, I spoke to his wife, like, "I don't really know how to do a foundation, but maybe we can call it the Beacon, you know, African-American Arts and Education Foundation," but something needs to happen to get the ball rolling, and I'm willing to actually do that. So, I gave all the numbers. I hope everybody has all of the flyers.
We'll follow up with it.
Thanks. And then the last part was the public relations committee. I, I kinda stayed back on that because of the new website that we had, and again, my, my, my dream is to have the district put out the information related to the school, that we become the go-to for information. I don't know how that is actually going to work, but last year, we worked really hard on coming up with ten questions that we would like to ask, put out to the community, and so I also made copies and sent that around. It actually is a part of a survey monkey, so if you guys can just take the time to look through the questions, if you have any concerns about a question and you wanna modify it, can we give ourselves a deadline on that, so that this way it can actually go back, I think it goes back to Anne Marie, right, and then it gets changed to what we agree on?
What we would do on July 5th, that would be one of the committees that you would recommend to have, and then the PR committee would then address it and then bring it forward to.
But you can't work on it now, so that is, because this is what happened, that's why?
We dissolve the PR committee.
No, but I'm saying, they can't look at this now?
They could look at it.
And then come up with a question, so we're already ready? Okay, that's probably. So if that's possible for you guys to do that, I would appreciate it.
Just to piggyback on your remarks really quickly, is there a way that we could put the award-winning essays on the district website, as well as the valedictorian, Voces valedictorian speech, because she's a Beacon student? It would just be great, and then maybe we can let the newspaper, well, the newspaper person here tonight, there's a really good story in that, Jeff.
I mean, I just wanna add what Kenya's saying, you know, I think Jeff Haynes is great. I did want to bring forward some other discussion in the diversity committee meeting. Rochester City School District actually did a, an intensive curriculum. They called it Black Lives Matter at School, which included lessons, plans from Morningside Center, Anti-Degression League, Teaching for Change, and what, they had circle discussions and stuff like that too, so I can skip the diversity committee and send it to secret curriculum, I guess, if that's what, that's what we're doing. But I think what happens is, is.
Well, you heard my thoughts, Anthony. I thought that it should go to the, that piece of what she was sending, if she wanted that specific. That sounded like curriculum, so I was saying, go to the curriculum committee. If you have stuff that the diversity committee reviewed and you think it's ready to go to the curriculum, you could definitely.
No, well, diversity committee hasn't reviewed this or that, that's what I'm saying. But I, I don't wanna, but I, I by no means wanna.
Skip the process.
Be a skip, no, I don't wanna be a stick in the mud and say, "We should wait, because February, by the time the curriculum has digested all this, we already own the horn." So I'd rather push it forward. So I consider my, you know, what I found is lesson plans and stuff to the curriculum committee as well, right?
You can submit anything you want on your behalf.
Okay. Alright, I'll do that.
So the last part is Dennis left, and he asked, I am also on the declaration, the reading of the Declaration of Independence Committee, and so all of the board. the reading of the Declaration of Independence Committee. And so all of the board members are invited to come out on July 4th at 11 o'clock to City Hall. Um, Dennis will be in, uh, I don't know, it's called something dress.
Period dress.
Period dress. Please do not call it a costume, cause that would make them upset. So it is very nice. It is well attended. Sometimes there's, it's standing room only, but it is an enjoyable event. Thank you.
All right. So Mr. Rakowski isn't here tonight, um, due to family emergency. However, um, he is the chairperson for the Facility and Operations Committee. And, um, I emailed you, um, earlier on today. I apologize that it wasn't sent earlier or put on board docs. I did send it to Kelly as well, so Oscar put it to board docs. It's the PowerPoint that Mike put together for this Facility and Operations Committee. Um, so I literally sent it like six o'clock-ish. So, um, I apologize that you didn't get to review it beforehand. So basically what it does is we have a capital project that is going to be, that we're planning for, for, for the 2019, um, school year. Um, over the last couple of months, the Facility and Operations Committee, which is made up of Mike Rakowski, the chair, Anthony, um, Craig, Anne Marie, um, we've had the director of facilities, which has been Henry. We've had Terry, who's been an intern, and now Anthony, who are, who's our new director of facilities, um, person to be present. We've also had the, um, round back architects at every meeting as well as at a couple of meetings. We've had the financial planning, um, financial partners of, uh, uh, what's his name? Chuck, right?
Yeah, Chuck Bastian.
Chuck Bastian. Um, so what you'll see is that we, uh, broke down the project. Um, we started out with the facilities and operations. What was it called? The building assessment?
Building survey.
Building conditions survey. Um, so we broke that down and we came up with a plan that we wanted to bring forward to the board to see if we could get the consensus to go forth. And, um, the PowerPoint kinda outlines what that plan is, what's included in the plan. Mike did a really good job of breaking it down to, um, to the, um, the total cost of, of the capital project was eight million, nine hundred, ninety-five thousand. Um, he broke it down, which included projects. There was 33 projects that are health and safety. Um, there were 15 projects that were asset prevention. There were 14 large maintenance projects, and there were things to get excited about. He had about 15, um, projects in there. Um, and he broke down the costs for each one. And then what he did was he outlined it per building, what the, uh, Facility and Operations Committee, um, was proposing for each building. Um, so he has roundabout, um, the high school, um, and we can highlight as you go through it. And if you have the consensus, this is what we're bringing to you to say, hey, can we go forward because the next steps are, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get through, um, where he has it. Um, the next steps would be, once the board, um, says yay, we're good with this, um, we would, like, send it to get, uh, more specific with develops of scopes and estimates. Um, we would get an architect presentation of a five-year plan. Uh, we would have the financial advisors come to do a financial presentation. We would do submittals to New York State. Um, and we're looking to have, um, the public vote on the capital plan in December. Um, so in December, we would wanna, want to go out for vote to the public. And we would have the project implementation start of 2019. And then we've already started outlining and looking at some of the, um, capital projects for 2022, um, as to what we could do. Um, there are some really good things that are in this, uh, capital project, one of them being AC at Roundabout and, and a certain area. Um, uh, there's an, uh, athletic multipurpose field, a turf field, um, that we're looking at as well. Um, there was upgrades to the home accreors office at, um, Roundabout. Roundabout's seen the makeout in this capital project.
I'm, I'm science lab.
Science lab at Roundabout. Um, so...
It's what emails, Roundabout's taking over everything.
So there were a bunch of, uh, capital projects that were, uh, that are in here that I think would be good for educational purposes for students, but also accent what we're doing as a, as a school community and, uh, to tie into the community at large. Um, so it wasn't just, uh, the, the committee members themselves, but we did have a lot of input. Um, and we saw input from building administration, from district administration, um, and, and really tried to listen to what was, uh, being asked of us to put together a really good comprehensive plan, um, for this capital project, knowing that we have a really big, uh, um, we could start a really big capital project in 2022. So if it didn't make it into the 2019 one, we could do something with the 2022 capital project. So, so if you get a chance to review it, um, I would like, I think Mike was looking at the July 5th to get the go-ahead from the board to say, hey, this looks really good and let's move from there. So if you could review it from now until July 5th, and if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to email Mike or any member of the Facility and Operations Committee, and we'll try and get those answers to you.
Anthony, if you know if there's any discussion or planning about publicizing the plant to public, cause you'll, we'll need to justify it and, and, you know...
Yep. So...
Convince them that they're, that these, you know, things that are needed or that are important from a health and safety perspective or from an education perspective, there's obviously, it's all contingent on their approval.
There are. So the first thing that we thought was, let's share it with the board, see if the board is okay with it. And after the board says, hey, this is really good, let's go, then we're going to start publicizing. And we start, we've talked about maybe having a triboards, uh, um, at every entryway with the capital project on it. And, and so they can start really seeing what it involves. Some of it seems like it's maintenance, but I mean, it's really needed maintenance and preventative work where it may not be an aha project, um, but it's really needed and it's gonna prevent, you know, future damage. Um, like roofs, not, not a big, uh, selling point, but it's needed, um, as preventative. But, um, we really tried to identify what, at each building, what we could do to have, uh, something that's noticeable and, uh, and, and seeing and, and good.
Certainly for things that are, you know, under the, under category of repairing or, I think, burn damage, usually with Rorschewell's, it's pictures showing what it currently looks like and, you know...
Yep.
You know, just like, like my guess for the buses, just, you know, people, people, they, they sort of implicitly understand things like, I didn't know roofs, like convince me, show me, show me, you know, what's, what's wrong now.
No, absolutely. So that was our next step was to, uh, you know, get it to the board so we can, uh, start going. So then we could start having the financial advisors in, getting the scopes out. Um, so then we could really know what is exactly in that financial part.
Um, the only other, right, so we needed a consensus for the board because we need to do a environmental impact study. I mean, normally that would be a smaller, smaller task, um, but with the turf field, it will, it'll be a little bit more. So we need the summer to do, to do that. So then in September, we can start making the requirements and get the publications out. So that's kinda what the timeline is.
Is there any thought, I mean, if there's parts of the project that, I guess, you know, there's things we feel are really mandatory, which is the, you know, health and safety, um, things that are not actually necessary, but we'd like to have, and, and carving some of them out and putting up as more than one proposition, just, you know, you don't want the whole thing to go down. Um, and if there's something that perhaps might not be popular?
Well, these, we're looking at this with no increases in taxes. So we're looking at this as there, there would be no increases in taxes with this, but that's where we need to get a, a better idea of what the scope and, uh, and the financial amount is of each, um, each project. So we can have that better understanding, uh, as is, there was some talk about maybe doing a separate proposition for something, but as a committee, we felt that it was important. Um, and we thought that if we separated it, it might not, might not vote, uh, might not go as well. So we thought it was better to include it, uh, uh, all in one. And that was some talk. And am I misrepresenting? I think there was a discussion about it.
We discussed that, uh, it's probably better to make it all one. And, uh, I think part of that is that it's, it's a lot simpler to understand when you have just the one. Uh, and you start piecing it apart, then it becomes more complicated. Um, besides the, uh, the 2022 project, it has a great deal of more financial capacity behind it. Um, so anything that, that we've deferred, that we're not deferring forever, we have a, an even larger project that comes behind this one. It's just that it'll be a few years later. This is a 2019 jump off point for actually doing the work. So, for example, there's the portion of Roundabout that would get air conditioning, but that isn't happening this year, or this week, or next year. Uh, these are very forward-looking plans. And when we talk about a five-year plan, we're talking about a rolling five-year plan where we look at this on a continuing basis so we keep up with things and literally do plan ahead. This is not hip-hop, it's stuff. This is carefully thought out and the, it started with a building condition survey to see what we need to do, what we ought to do. And there's categories within that, gradations of importance. And then there's these things that are educationally important where we can make an advance and give the students more. And some of these things are, frankly, would be boring if you got into the details. But if your roof leaks on you, it's not boring, it's terrible. So those are important too. So we've really tried to cover a lot of the, the different concerns and issues that are important to this district in various ways. And I think that the public will like it when they see the details. I hope we can get a PowerPoint ready for a future session and begin showing people what the details are. And, um, you know, it's a long way to December, it seems, but we've also got a very clearly laid out schedule. A few tweaks and fine points will emerge as we go. But you really do have to do this according to the schedule because there are so many elements involved, including state education department review. Uh, there is the CEQA process involved this time. And there's the financial implications of when you have money and when you go out for bonding and loans and board approvals internal. And, uh, the architects need time. Then when we go out looking for the construction companies to bid, if that works into the schedule, it's quite a, uh, involved process. So I'm glad to see we're at this stage. We seem to be moving on very well. I'm quite pleased with how it's going.
One thing I think is missing, and I mean, I would need, and I think maybe other board members would need as well, um, before we can approve it, is, is a discussion about how it's going to be financed. For example, you, you mentioned that it's not gonna increase taxes. That's nowhere in this presentation. And of course, that's, that's a big thing. It's, you know, the financial impact of the district.
Well, this presentation was not a, a public, it's to share to give you what we're...
You're asking us to approve?
We're not asking for a group, we're looking for a consensus to see if there's, if you're okay with this plan going forward. Like to see if we could get more detail to go on, to put it on a referendum.
Part of it is, what is the impact financially to the district? You know, what, what's gonna happen, you know, they, is it gonna be an increase in taxes? You said no, what...
No, we said, based on our estimates, it's not going to be. But we also have the financial planner coming, they would be coming to one session to talk about the specifics once they have all of the, they have more specific estimates. We would also have the architects coming to speak to you at another, another board meeting to, to address that piece as well.
I think asking for us to go forward with it without, without us knowing what the financial impact is, 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 we're, we're missing a piece.
So I can get, I can get an updated financial information email into the board prior to...
I mean, I know you, you've discussed it and I've, I've seen, I've seen the paperwork and on, on the plans, you know, how it's gonna lay out in terms of as debt comes, as debt can draw up, new risk can come on. But I, I mean, I've seen it, but I'm not sure all the board members have.
We actually shared that earlier when we started planning for the facility operations. We handed out that whole, uh, uh, financial plan spreadsheet to, to the board members that had the chart and so forth. So that was shared with the board.
But I can, I'll send the update. There is, there will be an update.
Excellent. That's when Mike first, first started talking about it. We shared that whole information. We shared what was in the, um, building condition survey with all board members. So you have it as to what, what was initially reviewed to what it is now. So. All righty. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Kristen for doing the Girls on the Run 5K with her daughter. My daughter participated as well. So basketball, 5K, it becomes part of the triathlon.
I also forgot to mention in my report that a lot of teachers, um, there were two schools represented from Beacon. It was Glenham and JBF. And a lot of teachers, um, came out or community members, but also like teachers came out as running buddies for, um, students whose parent or, you know, um, didn't have somebody to run with them. And it was a really great event. It would be great to have all the schools participate, um, because Orange County seems to have really powerful Girls on the Run program. And they kind of, our heat looked pretty thin compared to theirs. So I would love to, the look, which is its representation there.
Do you have something I haven't... Oh, thank you. I forgot something. So this morning, uh, this morning, feels like this morning, at six o'clock tonight, we met with the, uh, external auditors and they gave us, uh, preliminary field work, uh, needs to be scheduled. So they're going to be coming to the district on August 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, and 25th. Um, they're hoping to have a draft of the financial statements and a management letter, uh, comments on about, um, September 30th. And they would come to the board in, uh, mid-October to speak to the board member about the audit and the finance from the audit that they do. Um, they also shared with us a list of what they audit and, um, and what they look at for the audit and stuff. If you're interested, I could pass it around or you can have it out there. Good catch. All right. All righty. So we had unfinished business and it was about the NISBA convention. So I haven't heard from everybody, but I heard from some people. I heard from Kenya, um, and Georgia that they're willing, uh, interested in going to the convention. Um, was there anybody else?
Possibly me.
Possibly. It's almost like we need to harden.
I'm, I'm a definite no.
Definitely no.
If you want.
Tonight. We've been talking about it for the last month.
The last, if you want. I'm a no.
My no?
And we, and yes, it is not too many board members go. You think, okay?
Kenya, I have one. Craig?
Yes.
Okay. So what we'll do is I'll, we'll have, um, Kelly sign us up for the convention. So we have Anthony Craig, Kenya, Georgia, Maris.
I would love to say that.
It's in Lake Placid.
One, one of the things, uh, maybe Kelly, once you have the list of the people, is the, um, Dutchess County School Association is having a dinner, um, one of the, one of the nights there, um, you know, for, for anybody from Dutchess County. And Kelly Lappin, who's our, the executive director, would just need to know how many people from Beacon would be going to that dinner.
That'd be great.
So if you want, Kelly, I can send you a prepared, you know, resume.
Thank you, Bill.
All right.
So we have the consent agenda. Um, the use of the consent agenda will commence the board of education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate in the item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Is there anything from the consent agenda that anybody wants pulled?
I have a question on 11.04.
11.04, is there a specific?
Um, just, I'm just wanna, no, not really. Just wanna clarification on some are assignments versus not, some are assignments on...
Which, which number is that?
Well, uh, I mean, some of them are...
Hold on. So 11.04. You're not saying a specific number or letter?
No, I'm not saying a specific letter. Some of them say July 5th, 18, 18, and some of them don't, but they're...
I'll say just 11.04. Okay. All right. So...
So there are appointments on there for, um, IRP, which are later on in the summer for high school. There's also, um, appointments on there for our ESY program for the summer. So that runs a six-week program. We also have, um, there's appointments on here for staff. We need them for CSC meetings. So that would be for the whole summer and they're pulled off the list. Um, we have ninth grade boot camps. We have the dates for that. So these are covering various things that are going on in the summer?
So these are all summer?
Yeah.
All right. So that's fine. Get added to consent agenda.
Okay.
All right. Um, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda items 11.2 through 11.17. Second.
That was Kristen. Comments or questions? I'd like to say thank you for the donation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Eight oh. I need a motion.
Can I stop him?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes. I'm sorry.
I'm gonna make a mic to the end.
No, 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 no. We don't do, we can't tell you. So I'm sorry, Mr. Soldish, but, um, I'd like to introduce Mr. Giamata as the direct, the new director.
the new director of PE, Health, Recreation, and, and that, and that order, so.
Don't make any comments, Mr. Giamatta.
Very happy to take the position. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have an addendum to the agenda, which is 12.01. Kelly, we do have to switch the resolution over. I didn't notice on the consent agenda when we first talked about it. I said it would be 061917. We're gonna have to make this C, not A. So this is gonna be a resolution, item number 061917C, and it's to extend interim assistant principal appointment for Lori Price from 7/1/17 to 7/18/17. I need a... Georgia? Is there a second? 7/18/17. Is there a second?
Second.
Craig? Congress of questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Aye, aye. No second executive session? Is there a need? Anybody?
No.
No? Any in motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Marith, Congress of questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Aye, aye.